Thank you.
Very good.
Yeah.
My kids.
We're glad that.
Yeah.
That's a good.
You're the.
Okay, yes, yes.
You're in your position.
Oh, awesome.
It wasn't done.
Yeah.
Should I show you what to do? I'm sorry. You should have found that.
No, I was. I would like some. She's. Maybe.
Mm hmm.
Excellent. Yep, thank you.
Simply pause this song.
Yeah.
I just. See. No, the, the, if, if we actually. They can put it up on our end. If you're thinking about it, it's a hard year for us. But now that's, uh, yeah, you'll take it. Too much. Thanks. We got plenty of pictures on there. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Hello. How you doing?
Yeah. I know.
How confident you have? Let's talk to you.
I had a call to me if you have a case or anything.
Um, so we had a. So we have. So we find our contact. I'm gonna get a big man out. He's great. So I just. Kind of think, uh, we're just. By, since I. And then I did a decision or same. I don't, I don't see that. It's, it's. But I use. It's a survey or work property. They will.
Uh.
Something like, okay. That's personal.
Right. Curious what kind of about. Yeah. Somehow. Yeah. And of course. Yeah.
We have to. So he's. Before they could.
Yeah. Well. I don't see. It's like. So. Spies.
I'll be.
The conversion. It's.
I'm not used to. Oh, my. Reach.
So we want to.
I'm thinking.
And it just. Very good. Very good.
It's up. Up at the foyer where.
And tell me something.
Love it. Stand. And certainly done. Get some funs. And. Yeah. And so I've never. I'm tired. I don't. Figure out. But. So. They can.
No.
Your cheese. So.
Paper. Something else.
We're done. And okay.
Or we should have.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. That's. It's be, uh, just doing the last song. You really can expand this path. And.
Really.
Now, how they. Are. They're sharing again. So they're kind of not. Careful. So. Not. And. And, uh. The back. And a road. Product. Time. I know. So. The other day. The front. Realize. It's typically. It is. I'm. Beyond.
So. And then there was. Thanks. Please. We. Yeah.
But. But. So. Let's.
It's. That's. It's. Yes. It was a. Small. It's got a little. Large. Uh. It's.
But.
It's got a little. Kind of makes.
It wouldn't. Yeah. You, you may don't guess a little bit. It's. That's what I'm saying. Like.
Yeah.
But it. Yeah.
Got to. It was, uh, right. And I can't like.
I'm. My.
And, uh.
I think with all the bells. You always. Say.
Yeah. So. Not on. It's not. Really? A problem. Right. What time is it? I know. But it's not, uh, hydraulic. Perfect. Which is.
Yeah.
But, uh. Well, that was a lot. Um. You realize. If you have a basically. You don't. And it was trying to. Shouldn't do. Doctor. Uh. Uh. Right. You'll. It would. This. Question. But. I do. I can. I understand. Yeah. Other than. Who, uh. Twenty three. This. Twenty. Here's.
That'd be.
Say was something. You're not. Hey. Thanks.
Yeah. Now. We're most likely to. Judge. So.
Oh, it's. It's dramatic. For the point. We, uh.
It's very.
But like. Are we? Sir.
So. Smart. So. They have. And when I show. Company. It's. Easy. Yeah.
Can see. Like. It's. Probably. A bit of. Some hopes.
Is. Like such. Those. Such.
Do you have a preamble?
I. Heard the binder.
So, yeah, like. It's kind of, uh. Uh. And I. Like, um. I think. Any. I just. I think.
Yeah. Find the what?
The red little binder. Concerned. What? Yes, I'm there.
That's, uh. Yeah, I think.
The red. Well, that's. Red.
On it. It's. Is it on? Full. It's. This is. Really. Yeah. Yeah, that's. Maybe.
We didn't play. So. Yeah. It's. Yeah. That's. Uh. Yeah. Well, we. We guys. The. Yeah.
Ha ha ha.
Exactly. Well, either. Because. I think. It's. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I think. That's it. I'm like. It's like. In like. We. Think. We built it there. It's really. Oh, we're good. Don't. Lot. Guys. So. He's made. That. You don't want. Just like. Contractors. So like. He's probably. Don't like. I mean. I just want to. We actually. Actually. Not. That. I think. We can try. As. Okay. We can. I'm like. Man. It's. First of all. From the. Sign. But.
Speed. Well. You know. What do you know?
Yeah, we're like. Uh. Dramatically change. Right. See. But she. So.
He didn't. I think. That's. You know. They were. Honestly. Wow. Kids. Aren't like.
Yeah. 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 We're.
Kids. And.
Be like. Especially.
And.
Our. It's. It's.
So.
Right.
It's. We. So. We. Yeah. Such. Very. If. That. It's. It's.
Yeah. We actually. But. I took. That.
So. We.
Um. Yeah. I know. We have. Strong. Was. Okay. Please. Uh. This was. An. We. Right.
Or why? You.
So the other. Plan. Is. Uh. At the time.
And that's. Exactly.
I just. We were. So. Ready. Start. That's. All. So.
Yeah.
But. Oh.
Cause we have.
Time. Yeah. We're just like, well. Late. And we. Don't. Down. I don't.
Nice. Kind of. Now. There's. All sales are, you know. They're your person. Number. Of. Your. People. Do you?
Yeah. There's a. I want contractors. So. They have some of the. President. Emperor. Like. Yo.
Right.
Watch. That.
Yeah.
Uh. It's like. That one. But. Um. He like. But. It was somebody. Times.
Oh, dear. Lower. Number. They still. Yeah.
Okay.
Press. Lower. Person.
I, I don't know. Yeah. Yeah. Still kind of. Put a. Grand.
Oh.
Since we have. Done. But. Pretty much.
Yeah.
Yes. You can see the. Most. For the. You know. Turn. That's. Oh, yeah. Like. Player.
Okay.
Yeah. It's. Your. Yeah. So. The. Just.
They. Also. So. Well. What? This. Number.
So.
They are still looking.
Well. Well.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. Yeah. And. Yeah. So. They don't. They don't. He's. No. I mean. Joe's had the binder. Is it in the binder?
I'm not sure. Sorry. But. You. You only. Backs. All things. And practice. On the. They. It was. You're in the.
But you don't.
Yes. Remember. There.
And they. See. You're getting. Good. Advice. It's. Only.
Oh, yeah.
I know. They're always. In a. Yeah. Because. Yes. I'm sorry. Help. Because. Uh. There's. Few. Yes. Well. I said. And. Uh. So. Yeah. He goes.
Thanks. You're. Yeah. So.
Important. To this. Up. They'll. So. It's. Be. Like. You. I had. A. Right. The builder. That. You. So. Five. Also. He's. Want to. Whether. You're serving. You.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening. We're going to, uh, start the, uh, meeting for zoning board of appeals for June 5th, 2025. It is, uh, well after six. Um, calling this meeting to order. Roll call. Let it be, uh, known that we do have a quorum barely this evening. Thank, thanks. Thanks, board. It's a busy time of year for everybody. Understand. Uh, minutes. The minutes from, uh, April 3rd, where there was not a meeting in May.
I read them. They were short. Then I moved to approval.
I second.
A first and a second to approve the April minutes. All those in favor? Aye. They are approved. Uh, staff, any organizational or procedural items? And there's no unfinished business. So we can proceed to new business. Once I read the preamble that we just found. Uh, the zoning board of appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements after determining whether there exists undue hardship upon an applicant and determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code and ordinances to the facts of each case. The zoning board of appeals does not create zoning, nor can it change zoning. Matters brought before the zoning board of appeals are to be concerned only with variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance, sign ordinance, and development and environmental ordinances. The board has no authority to grant variances for use, density, or height. Further, the board hears cases requesting an appeal to a staff interpretation or decision on these same ordinances. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeal may be appealed by petitioning the Superior Court of DeKalb County within thirty days after the decision here is rendered. With that, we'll start with CBA case 25-04. Applicants at 2414 River Glen Circle. Requesting two variances this evening. One from, uh, to allow an accessory structure to encroach in the stream buffer and a second to allow an accessory structure to encroach into the side setback. Allie, walk us through that.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. In this case is for one accessory structures, but two requests. Uh, one from the zoning ordinance, one, one from the stream buffer ordinance. So it's, uh, um. Yeah, you can see the, uh, the little accessory structure that was built, um, over here. So this is one of those cases where, um, a structure was built without, uh, obtaining the required permits or variances beforehand. Um, it is a small, approximately sixteen by sixteen foot, uh, accessory structure, and it holds on the inside. It holds a spa, um, a hot tub. It is, uh, in the rear, as you can see in the left-hand side, um, of the subject property. Um, there's a stream that goes diagonally, uh, across the sides, and the stream buffers cover pretty much, uh, pretty much the entire buildable area of that property. Um, the structure is also too close to the property to the north. So there's a ten-foot required setback for accessory structures, and the structure is within seven and a half feet. So it's, uh, it's, it's roughly three feet, uh, that the request is for that setback variance. This case came to us, uh, as, as a complaint. Um, the court enforcement team was notified of unpermitted removal of twelve trees in the stream buffer. Um, that, that action has been resolved in its entirety. So was a citation issued, uh, that was resolved by the court in December. Um, so that aspect is taken care of. Um, but the staff notified a, uh, a structure in the backyard, which is what is before you are now. Um, those constructed, uh, recently and encroaches both into the setback and the stream buffer. So also for case history, um, we were notified, um, about, uh, there was a sink that drained right into, uh, the stream. Uh, the applicant has since taken care of that, too, has removed the drain that now drains into, um, a tub, not directly into the stream anymore. Um, overall, this lot is entirely unbuiltable to current standards. There, there is no buildable area on this property. Um, it's, it's in the entire buildable area is covered with the seventy-five foot and the twenty-five foot stream buffers. Um, the applicant has reached out to the state of Georgia about the twenty-five foot stream buffer. Um, state does not, uh, does not require variance for this because it is constructed already, but they will require consent decree once the municipality, once we have approved our variance, they have to go to the state of Georgia and obtain a consent decree. Um. Overall, the accessory structure is not an undisturbed property. It really is sort of behind the retaining wall. Um. So you have like the stream, then there's a retaining wall that holds up the backyard, and then the retaining wall is, or the, the structure is on top of that. Um, and there was no land disturbance, um, uh, to install, to install the structure. There, there was a existing, uh, play area, uh, in that, in that location, but because it is a different structure now, um, they're, um, required to obtain a variance with us. Um. The setback encroachment on the side is relatively minor. Uh, it's three feet. It is, um, still seven, uh, over seven feet away from the property line, and the applicant has, uh, a letter of support from the neighbor on that side. So the person who's most impacted by this has consented to this. Um, overall, if, um, yeah, if the, uh, setback requirements and the stream buffer requirements were strictly applied to this, the lot would be, uh, buildable, um, and the applicant couldn't make any incremental changes like this to the property, uh, we would consider this, um, a practical difficulty. Um, therefore, we're recommending approval to both variances, um, with the condition
There's just a very minimal increase in impermeable surface. I'm assuming either the roof or the concrete slab. That's not a concern. Do you have any? Numbers on that?
No, because we don't really know what was there before, so we can't really quantify the increase. If you see, I can pull up the photo. Um, there's like, uh, there's really small gravel on, uh, on the yard now, which has both pervious and impervious characteristics at the same time. Uh, we don't really know what was there before. Um. This is overall, this is just a, a sixteen by sixteen structure, so the increase is, is truly minimal.
Okay.
Or the other.
Okay. And then my other question is, this is a raised surface of five feet above. Um, I don't recall if it's above the stream level or above the rest of the yard. Um. Where does, are, are there drainage aspects? Uh, and maybe I need to ask the, the homeowner, but are there drainage aspects? And, and again, kind of going back to the sink drain that was rerouted, not draining straight into the stream, but whether from the roof of this structure or any water coming out of that, do you know what that?
So.
Design is?
So I, I do not, um, and, and again, because we couldn't. We didn't, we don't, we don't know, we could, we couldn't see sort of what's in the ground, but the applicant can probably respond to that. Yeah.
Anything else for staff? Thanks, Paul. Would the applicant care to address the board and state their case for the variance?
Mr. Chairman and Board, uh, thank you for giving us an opportunity to appear tonight. My name is George Mendon. I'm a friend, uh, of Cynthia Dame, uh, and her, her husband who passed away in February twenty twenty two. The, the Dames were the original owners of this property. They purchased the, the home in nineteen seventy three. The Dunwoody was created, uh, in two thousand eight and the, the creation of this seventy, well, first of all, the designation of this stream, very, very small stream as a stayed water was a surprise to the, to the Dames. The, the discovery of the seventy-five foot setback was also a complete, uh, surprise to them. The, the, I, I'm sure it was never contemplated that this entire property would be covered by, um, by stream buffers when, uh, when the, the Dunwoody ordinances were created, but we appreciate the opportunity to have a variance hearing so that we can address the, the issues. Ms. Dame, um, after Mr. Dame passed away, Ms. Dame began, uh, renovating some of the things in the home that had not been updated for many, many years. The, as part of that project, she engaged a contractor and asked him to build this, I think Allegra's referred to it as a shed, but this accessory structure to incorporate, uh, to cover a hot tub. The, the side setback issue is very interesting. The contractor, first of all, did not permit the structure improperly. Uh, Ms. Dame did not, was unaware of that. This is a, a fine contractor who, uh, who has helped in other aspects and done a marvelous job. And you can tell from the quality of the construction, he really built a, a nice building. But Ms. Dame was relying on him to, uh, to obtain permits should they be necessary and to position the, uh, the building properly. He measured from a fence that has existed from the time the home was built. Originally, the developer that created the subdivision was the next door neighbor. And it was understood that the property line was the fence. So for, since nineteen seventy three, everyone has been measuring from that, uh, from that fence as the property line. So the reason, uh, that, that this building is too close to the side setback was because of a misunderstanding that has existed for decades about the, the location of the property line. The, um, the, the, uh, the building is built to code. We've had an engineer look at the code and Ms. Dame has engaged an EPD consultant to address issues like permeable surface and water quality. And, and, uh, he, he has been very comfortable that we are not impacting the water quality of the stream. There are no downspouts or French drains. It drains off of the, the roof into the, the gravel that surrounds this building, which was effectively, um, what, what was there before? It was a children's playground before. So there was no clearing required when this building was, was constructed. Um, and, and I think, uh, the, i- i- if there are other questions, we would be happy to address them. We'll reserve any remaining time that we have, should someone, uh, speak in opposition, which we really don't expect. The only party that we think has responded is the next door neighbor who really likes the building. It's actually quite attractive.
Thank you. Uh, before we proceed to any opposition, is anyone else that wants to speak in favor of this application? Okay. And no one in opposition? I don't have, I don't have a speak card or anything like that. So, okay. Uh, Board, questions?
Um. I mean, I don't have a problem with the structure itself. Our only problem is with due respect is that there's a history in the property. I mean, you guys, I know Joe and I, we were there in two thousand eleven. So that means that the applicant knows about the fact that they're supposed to be. Well, you said it's a surprise, but I guess when you apply in two thousand eleven, you should have known that there was, you knew. I mean, I know that you knew that there was some type of, of restrictions to the property. So, uh, cause you got the screen porch in two thousand eleven. And then you got two thousand twenty-four. I mean, I could understand about the tree, but there were twelve trees and no permits, but that's a different story. Um, so that's my only thing with this is thing really is that I don't, you know, the structure doesn't seem like something that I don't want to, but I'm just, I'm wondering, the contractor, did he tell the applicant that he was applying and did not apply? I, I mean, tell me a little bit of the story, convince me on that part.
Mr. Sebastian, thank you for bringing that up because it was a surprise to me when, uh, when I read the staff report. And I actually asked Ms. Dame about the two thousand eleven construction and she said that the contractor handled the permitting and she was unaware that there was a building setback. Uh, the, the permitting was for a, a sunroom, which was uh, over an existing, uh, porch structure. The, so she was unaware of the seventy-five foot setback. So you're right, as the homeowner, she's always responsible for what's, uh, what's happened on the property. Not the same contractor. The contractor that did the two thousand eleven construction has passed away. And a new contractor was engaged to help with this, uh, with this project. Um, but the, the, so she really was not aware of the, uh, of the stream buffer requirement.
Okay. How about the trees?
The, the, the trees were severely, um, severely diseased, uh, the, but she did not request a, uh, a permit to remove the trees, was actually not aware and the, the tree company didn't say anything about them. Uh, may I show you a couple of pictures of the trees?
You can, but you, but I, I believe you. I mean, you could just tell me, uh, it's more informational for my, for my mind.
Yeah, severely diseased trees. And actually, there are a couple of trees, additional trees that need to come out. The, uh, the, because of the stream, the erosion is significant, uh, in the, the tree root systems. There's a hemlock that, uh, you can, you can push a stick more than ten feet underneath the tree. So the, there, there were twelve trees that were taken out initially and that were, that were part of the project and the, it, it was actually the tree removal that kind of started this process. One of the neighbors didn't like the, uh, the saws, which were being run, I think on a Sunday. And, uh, and that began the, the, uh, the citations and the involvement with community development.
Okay. And one more, so I'm guessing and correct me if I'm wrong, there was a hot tub there and you decided to cover it?
No, it was a, a new hot tub that was, that was placed there and the building was, uh, was constructed specifically for the new hot tub.
Okay.
Here's the, the, the water that was going from the sink. You said it's going, where's the water going now?
There was a small half inch sink. It's now been routed to a cistern, which is used to hand water. It, it, it's a, a sink for potting plants. Uh, part of the purpose for this building was to create kind of a, a potting area. She, she's an, Ms. Dame is an avid, avid gardener. And so she's rerouted that little, it's a, it's a flexible half inch, uh, tube that ran off of the sink and it's been rerouted to a, a cistern.
Okay.
So when you flush the hot tub, uh, occasionally, right? I know you, you treat it with chemicals mostly, but when, when and if you have to, to drain it, where does that go?
That goes into, uh, uh, well, I usually keep the water and just water areas and around my house. And, um, and put it, the hose through the sink in the house to drain. So.
But this is a relatively.
There is.
I'm not sure it's been drained yet.
I'm sorry, probably not.
There is no running water in that shed.
Right. Yeah. No, I was thinking it's probably a dimensionality.
So it has to be siphoned out.
Yeah.
How, how do you, how did you fill the tub of the hot tub?
With the hose.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
From the spigot that's on the house.
Yeah, with the hose.
Okay. Other questions? No?
I do have one last question. The state consent decree. So if we approve the variance request tonight, then do you take that to the state and say, John, what do you approve this? Give us the, can we please have the consent decree for being in their twenty-five foot buffer?
Yes, the, the consultant's gone to the state of Georgia. He's directed us to the Mountain District and alerted them to the fact that once we finish with Dunwoody, they will be making a request for a consent decree from the Mountain District.
Yeah. So I guess my understanding is that because it's already constructed, they don't give a permit. They're not, but if we say yes, they're more than likely to say yes.
That's our understanding as well.
So Paul, this has come up in the application as well. They're talking about this, uh, designation as a, a state water. It's really just a twenty-five foot buffer, right? Is there a distinction there? Be good for the board, be good for the board to know.
Yeah, I had.
Um, the, they're called waters of the state, but we are the local issuing authority. So we are the authority that designates the, the streams. There is state law around streams. Um, we designate that it is a stream. Um, then there's a twenty-five foot state stream buffer. So that's, that's the first twenty-five feet. We have a municipal, uh, stream buffer as well that is full seventy-five feet.
Right.
So anything in the twenty-five area is technically covered by two state buffer, by two buffers, the municipal and the state buffer. And for the state, whenever we see an encroachment, we just notify the, the state that there is a violation. And then they may do what they may do. Now, some, depending on staffing levels, you know, they may take something on. If it's like a big, uh, commercial case, they'll probably take it on. For like the smaller cases, they typically tend to let us, um, do our investigation and, and us take it on and then they may, you know, just like file it away pretty much.
So it's essentially just a twenty-five foot buffer. We're not talking about something different, like it's ephemeral versus always running or something. This, it's just the twenty-five foot buffers we're talking about. Yeah. And that's been there forever. So, I mean, that's from, really, that's nothing new for sure. Okay.
From the time it became designated to state water, which, which it probably was not at the time the subdivision was developed.
Yeah, potentially. That's right. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, I'm willing to make a motion. The only thing is I just would tell, this is just don't take it as an admission, but unfortunately for you, Miss Dame, your house is in the seventy-five foot buffer. I would submit to you.
Yeah, no kidding. I don't know that.
Well, listen to me, I would submit to you that anything you do would probably need a permit. So just.
Uh, put a plant on the front porch.
So because.
I mean.
Well, one, one second, you, you, you.
My head, I should have known that.
You do, you do it all right, because I'm in my forgiveness mode, but let me tell you. Um, and so if you come a third time and you say it's the, the, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. You gotta know when you're doing good and be quiet. So, so I would say if the contractor says, you, you might have something. Listen, you have a right to come. I mean, you're homeowner. That's why you're in the money. But the only thing is that it gets, at least to me, when I have to give you something because it's already done, you know? But given that a fact, just take that into, anything you do, I'm just telling you, you probably going to need a permit or acts of permit. So with that in mind, I will move to approve the request for variance from chapter sixteen, section seventy-eight to allow an accessory structure to encroach into the seventy-five foot stream buffer. And for variance from chapter twenty-seven, section fifty-eight, to allow an accessory structure to encroach into the side setback with the following conditions. So that would be for both, right? The string buffer and the side setback. Construction must be in a substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by Georgia Land Surveying dated seven, July second, two, twenty twenty-four. It's appendix A.
I second.
First and a second for approval. All those in favor? All right. Application approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
And now proceed to our second case of the evening, which is ZBA twenty-five dash oh six. The homeowner is at fifty-two thirty-one Falkirk Drive. Request a variance from chapter twenty-seven, section fifty-eight to allow a porch to encroach into the side street setback.
Yeah, this one is a small subdivision off of Mount Vernon Place that was built as an infill subdivision in the twenty-tens. Uh, subject property was built in two thousand fifteen. And that is sort of at that triangle up there between, uh, Dunwoody Club and Tilly Mill. The house itself was built in, uh, twenty fifteen. And, uh, really has, uh, streets on, on three sides and the associated street setbacks. So it's Falkirk Drive curves up here a little bit, um, and then Mount Vernon Place at the top of the screen, um, acts as sort of, uh, um, another street furniture, um. When it was built in two thousand thirteen, I think there was a variance that reduced that setback along Mount Vernon Place to twenty feet, which is how the, the, the building was constructed. Um, but now the, uh, applicant wants to build a covered porch, um, into that setback. So another variance is required. On the left hand here, you can see, uh, that covered porch. There is an existing deck. Uh, there's an, this image here on the left, there's an existing, um, deck in place. But now the applicant wants to extend the area of the deck and replace the existing deck with a covered porch. And, uh, for this lot, um, the buildable area is severely constrained, um, due to the street furnitures on, on three sides of the subject property. Uh, there also is a, a small drainage easement along the, um, eastern side of the property that further decreases, um, the property. The way the building is installed currently wouldn't allow any additions to the structure. Um, in addition, the porch project will maintain the same linear encroachment as the existing deck. The deck is currently, um, eleven feet from the property line. The difference here is that this is a, a roofed structure that is a vertical structure. So a variance is required, but the linear encroachment is the same. Um, porches and decks generally are common improvements, um, in uh, for homeowners in Dunwoody and there's similar projects elsewhere in the subdivision. And, and we find that the strict application of the setbacks would create a practical difficulty for the applicant, uh, because it would prevent this incremental, these incremental changes to the property. And with this, we recommend, uh, approvals subject to our typical conditions.
Thank you. Any initial questions?
Just one.
Okay.
So Paul, to clarify, the footprint remains the same. It's just the, that we're adding height because it's now going to become a, um, a porch rather than just a deck.
So the footprint increases also. Um, you can see the two yellow boxes on the, on the screen here. Um, the left yellow box, that is more or less the extent of the existing deck. And that will become a covered porch. Um, the right hand box, that'll be a deck addition.
And that's new.
And that's new. So the, uh, footprint will increase, but the linear.
The, the extent, the encroachment amount or distance does not change. Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would the cat applicant care to, um, address the board? Just state your name and address if you'd like to. You had to go, yeah. It's not required, but, uh, you might as well take the time.
My name's Daniel and I'm Michelle's husband.
Just state your, uh, address too, real quick.
Fifty-two thirty-one Falkirk Drive, Dunwoody, Georgia.
Okay.
Why, why you want the family?
Yeah. Oh, the wife wants a new deck. So, uh, she wants and I deliver.
Okay. There you go.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll ask you, right?
Yes.
Cause you gotta.
Stay, stay there.
Stay there. You might as well just stay there. We'll close the park first and then we ask you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, anyone else here that wants to speak in favor of this application? Anyone in opposition? Okay. Now, Artie.
Um, yeah, so stay with me, right? In order for us to give you the variance, because it's varied, it's outside what everybody else gets. You gotta give us a reason why, right? You got things going for you. Hmm. It's the same footprint, right? And maybe it needs some changes, but tell us. Tell us why.
Why we need a new deck?
Why you want a new deck?
Oh, because the old one is old and dirty and never gets used because of the status that we bought the house in. And, uh, we have a huge family, so the living room in and of itself does not suffice. But the deck would then extend basically the living room area so we could host a lot more people at the same time.
It's probably dangerous to the old deck is getting to be rotted.
Just unusable. Correct. Yeah. Board's coming up, nail is coming out with being, uh, rotted. All of the above. Yep.
Okay. And it looks like there's very little buildable area in your backyard, which is the Mount Vernon Place facing yard.
Right, correct.
That has that twenty foot setback, which again leaves very little room.
Right, yeah. So we managed what, what space was allotted into, like you said, not have further encroachment. So, uh, our developer is trying to keep it within the reasonable area.
Cause essentially it's, that's their side, right? That's their side.
Yeah.
Back deck. So it's, it really is back deck. That's for variance, it's their side yard. So, yeah, limit, very limited, yeah. It's a corner lot. Corner lot has issues.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. All right, Board, anything else?
No, I think Ryan's ready to make a motion, right?
All right. I move to approve the request for a variance from chapter twenty-seven, section fifty-eight to allow ports to encroach into the side street setback with the following conditions. One, construction must be a substantial compliance with the sub- submitted site plan prepared by Grand Soul Engineering dated three, six, twenty twenty-five. And two, if construction has not been commenced within two years of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Second?
First and a second to approve. All those in favor? Application approved.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I know.
All right, moving on. Next case, ZBA twenty-five dash zero seven. Homeowners at fifty-three thirty-four Vernon Lake Drive. Requesting a variance from chapter twenty-seven, section fifty-eight to allow a porch to encroach into the rear setback.
Evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you all again. It's been a while.
Likewise.
I know.
So the case this evening, um, is for fifty-three thirty-four Vernon Lake Drive. Uh, as you can see on the left, this is the existing house with the deck. Um, you can see that there's a covered portion, or excuse me, like a, a sunroom essentially over to the left and then an uncovered, um, open air deck. Uh, and then on the site plan, you can see I've highlighted the existing deck in red. Um, you can also see that, uh, majority, um, uh, of the sunroom is existing in the setback currently. Um, the applicant actually received a variance a few decades ago at this point, um, from DeKalb County to allow them to build that, um, sunroom in the setback. Um, and the existing deck, um, they are now requesting to screen in with a porch. So essentially adding a roof um, over the existing deck. Uh, they will also add a fireplace to the screened-in porch and that will sort of marginally increase the encroachment into the setback, but otherwise it will remain the same. You can see on the left, those are the elevations. So that's what the proposed project is supposed to look like. One thing to note about this property is the house is set back about eighty feet um, from the front property line. The setback is, um, uh, at the time when it was developed, um, most houses were developed with a fifty-foot front setback. Um, but this house specifically is sort of up on a, on a hill. Um, it's in a very, um, hilly part of the neighborhood that has a lot of topography. Um, it's also on a curve, which makes the depth of the lot much more squat, um, than other neighborhoods or properties in the neighborhood. Um, so for that reason, it's eighty feet from the front uh, property line, which makes the existing deck only twenty feet from the rear property line. Um, so that's sort of the reason why, um, that back area is so, um, restricted uh, in terms of development. It really limits the buildable area based on the orientation um, and specifics of the lot. Uh, but overall, um, you know, this is sort of a common improvement that you see in Dunwoody. It's a common improvement that a lot of their neighbors have. Um, it's also a project that many of the lots in the neighborhood could accommodate, but because of the specifics, um, of their property and, and how the original house was cited, um, and, you know, the lack of a, a deeper lot, um, than some of their neighbors is, uh, requiring them to make this request. And we do find that the strict application of setbacks do improve, uh, prevent them from making any improvements to the rear yard. And so for that reason, we are recommending approval on the request, subject to two conditions. Um, just to the site plan, um, and, uh, if construction has not commenced within two years, approval shall be void. One other thing I'd like to note is that someone did submit a comment on this project earlier today, a public comment. Um, and I just included that in the folder behind the motion sheet, if you would like to take a look at that. Um, but I believe that's their neighbor to the rear.
That the one with the drainage kind of concern?
Yeah, that was the, the comment in there. That's, it's pertaining to this case.
Okay, I saw it.
And that neighbor, the, the house is not directly to the rear of them. There's a very long driveway and that, and the house is much, um, couple more hundred feet north, uh, but it impacts the driveway access to the property.
Can I actually? Does the city have any comment on that, the concerns?
It's an existing condition. I wasn't made aware of it until today. Um, so, uh, the most I can say is I know that, that water flows downhill, um, and so that driveway is downhill. Um, they've concentrated it into a drain. Um, there are ways to mitigate water coming out of a spout to, um, help disperse the water more. Um, but, um, yeah, I, I haven't, I didn't see it when I was out and did my site visit. I wasn't aware. So I don't have a picture of it or anything.
And without going into too much, do you anticipate maybe, and I'm not holding you on today because we all knew to it, um, that the construction will have any effect on making the flow worse or better or or we need to put more, more, um, uh, requirements?
I don't know the specifics of, of how, um, you know, I can't tell from the details on the architectural drawings how they're, they're handling the drainage. Um, but typically for projects this small, we don't really anticipate, um, uh, any, any massive increases to, to storm water off of the property. It's very marginal increase in, in, you know, impervious surface. And right now it's already sort of semi-pervious with that being a deck, so.
Thank you.
Anything else for Medlin? No? Okay. Thank you. Uh, applicant, would you care to, uh, address the board, state your name and address and why you, uh, want the variance?
Thank you. Uh, my name's Kevin Hermits. My wife's back here, Christina. And, uh, one of my twins, who's thank goodness doesn't live with us anymore. He's out of the house. Um, he's here. Um, we've, uh, we permitted with the city and Dunwoody a major renovation for the first floor. And this is part of that project, but this triggered the, uh, uh, vet need for variance because of the roof. So we're fully underway with the renovation on the rest of the house. We actually had to move into our neighbor's basement, which has been a blessing because we're close enough to be able to check on the job, but we're living in a basement. But, uh, anyway, we really wanna, uh, add the roof over the deck to make it more functional and usable and, and just have some outdoor living area. The uncovered deck just wow, it might have been a good idea at one point. We, we never use it because it's outdoors. And, uh, so we really wanna add to that. We've got letters of approval from the two neighbors on each side and the one across the street. Uh, behind us, there are no, there's no house directly behind us. There is a driveway that, that runs behind the house and then goes several hundred feet to another home. Uh, but we really wanna do this just to make it more livable, add value to our house and uh, and just make it more enjoyable.
Thank you. Uh, we may have more questions in a minute, but anybody else that wants to speak in favor? Nobody in favor, anybody in opposition, I think we have one public comment card. Are you Joanne? Yes, you need to come and state your name and address, please.
Thank you for uh, giving us this opportunity to speak. We want to be good neighbors, but.
Joanne, you need to say your name and address real quick, for the record.
Okay, sure, Joanne Mason. Sixteen eighty Manhasset Farm Road, which is a neighborhood, a very small neighborhood. That abuts the Vernon Lake property. In fact, that driveway he's talking about. There are seven homes that line up along our driveway. And we have not had good neighbors. They throw their trash over, it's like they think it's a public park or something, I don't know, but it, there's just been a lot. Of um, encroachment of various sorts, for example. This house, um. This house, when they had extensive landscaping done a few years back. They buried the downspout and took it to the edge of the property, so it came directly funneled onto our property. We have a road there, it was eroding the road. Because it was concentrated. And so, um, we did redo the road, but the erosion will continue, so one of our concerns is. If they put a roof over the deck. Where that water that would have just come in that area would go. Sort of filter through the earth, whereas if you put a roof over it, all the roof. Imagine would, they would want to have a downspout or two. So my question is, where would those downspouts? Go, we already have one coming directly on our property. Um. Years ago, and I'm not sure if these people own the house then, but I think they may have. There was a variance to put the deck and. Onto the tw- twenty feet into the forty foot setback. While we watched it go on, there was also an additional structure that we did not know was going to be there, so we have been sort of. Um, skeptical, I guess you would say, when a variance is allowed, and now as I read what's on the screen. There's to be a fireplace that would include. In a small incremental way, even more into that remaining twenty foot. Up. So for that reason, we came tonight to speak. To ask you to consider something that would help us. We just have had so much encroachment, just as we came here tonight, we go down the row and there are just piles of trash that people throw over the fence. We don't have grass there, it's totally wooded. But we certainly. You know, try to maintain it, and it is our property that we put pay taxes on. So we ask you to consider something that would help it. Not further encroach and further harm harm our property, thank you.
Thank you. The applicant care to uh, you still have time in favor? Here to uh, address how you're gonna be specifically probably the uh, the. Rainwater from the new uh, structure and so forth.
Well, um, as Madeline mentioned, the rainwater, I mean, gravity is gravity. When the rain comes down, it's gonna, that's downhill. It's just like the the rain that lands on their property goes downhill to someone else's property. And and so, we we did have the landscape company put it underground in pipes to go to the edge of the property. And so there's probably at least twenty feet of. It's mostly, wouldn't you agree, pine straw? Between my property line and driveway and ivy. So there's probably twenty feet of ivy and pine straw that the water. Comes out of and filters through before it gets to the driveway. We've never been made aware of any any uh, erosion issues, we, I I'm not sure we've we've actually met the Masons, but. We certainly have not been made aware that there's any uh, erosion issues. Um, we don't throw trash over the fence, if if some house and trash got over there, or Eric soccer ball got back there when my kids were young, that probably did happen. But um, we certainly don't throw trash over the fence and and um. And there's of the seven houses, I don't know of any neighbors that would intentionally be throwing trash over the fence, but. Anything we would, we could do to stop the water from, if it was an erosion issue, we could certainly slow it down. But I don't think that the flow of water, given the ivy and the pine straw that flows through. Is creating any measurable impact on the driveway. That's my personal opinion. Um, I just don't think uh, that distance would would create that.
With with this new, with its downspouts for this new structure, we're going to the same.
They would either go in the same. Pipe or another one that goes essentially the same place, they, it has to go out the back of the yard, and that's where the gra- that's where gravity's gonna take it. So, I don't know what the idea is, if it's best to put in a separate pipe or or new pipe, but either way it'd go underground. Or. If we did put it underground, it's gonna flow on our property and go onto their property, one way or the other, the water's going downhill. But I think it slows down enough when it comes off our property through that uh, landscape barrier of ivy and pine straw. It's not an issue, but. Um, I don't know what else to do, cause that's just where all water's gonna go that direction.
Okay, um, to clarify, your front yard slopes significantly toward. The street, correct? And the backyard, is it flat or does it also slope away from the house?
It's flat to and sloping down, we, there's one part we made flat, because we created a backyard, but it slopes down.
The the back.
It floats towards their driveway, not toward the front. The front yard slows for the street, the backyard slows toward their property.
Okay, so. You said you do have a a level area. That you created for the kids to play, and then it slopes beyond that?
Yeah, so we we built up a little area to fill in with dirt, that's probably, at the property line is probably this high. So it's a flat area, then it drops about three feet and then levels off to their driveway.
Do you have a retaining wall?
It's a little wooden, probably a two and a half to three foot retaining wall that that we built and. We moved there in two thousand, so it's probably two thousand five or six, something like that. Twenty years ago.
And and so, beyond that retaining wall is where it slopes down toward the Mason's property?
No, the part of the property, that's the part that's flat, the rest of the property naturally flows to their property with no, there's no retaining wall there.
Okay. And so, from a downspout perspective for the roof that's going over your deck. I'm still confused as to where the current drainage pipe flows that the Masons were referencing, but. Is it? Could you ask the developer, the the contractor to route that? Downspout from the porch roof. Different, i- in any different way, I mean, I know you said everything's gonna flow downward.
Different pipe. But their property line runs the entire span of our back property line. So there's nowhere else for the water to go, but to their property line. It can't go uphill to the property neighbor to the left, and also it'd just be putting it on someone else's property. And the the uh, neighbor to the right. That does slope flat to downhill a little bit, but then again, we'd be just dumping on their property and be a very long way to run it down there. Um, but their their property line, as they mentioned. Extends along s- their driveway along seven houses. So seven people have no other choice for their back water to go but toward their driveway. And I don't think anyone's intentionally trying to dump water on their, on their property and maliciously, that's just where the, that's where water goes.
Do you offhand know the dimensions of this? Of the. The roof that's going over this deck, I'm just trying to get a sense of.
Probably sixteen feet deep and about thirty two feet long.
And I guess looking at it, it. It maybe extends to half the length of your house, the thirty two feet?
Yeah, it comes off the sunroom that was added in eighty eight.
Mm-hmm.
It basically extends, uh, extends about thirty two feet along that, so it's essentially the same gutter line. It'll be, it'll just have a little bit lower profile.
Right.
Than that roof.
Okay. And you said it's about sixteen feet. Yes, okay. Alright, thank you.
With that, we'll close it uh, from public comm- oh.
If I could quickly, um. And uh, a sentence to those stormwater issues, we see them all the time. The, I think the issue that that may be present is if. The water drains how it drains, I mean, that that's something that people just have to accept, because the topography is what it is. What happens is when when people put uh, downspouts and pipe the downspouts to the property line. It it ends up sort of in a concentrated, you have a concentrated flow that ends up at exactly one location. The more water you, like, that goes in there, then you can have a erosive condition that have, that that can happen. Which which is maybe what has happened here, may not be what has happened here, um, but that that might be the issue, um. If if the water runs on the surface, you know, that that is something that people generally have to accept, but the uh, the piping may have caused the problem.
Okay. With that, we'll close uh, public comment and um. We're coming.
Well, I, I'm thinking. Um, not articulate for all of us. Oh. Miss Mason's concern. It's not the encroachment, it's the, well, it's gonna affect the flow.
Yeah.
So, um. Right, I mean, I'm looking at the picture as it is now. There is a deck there. There's the other roof line that's there. I just don't know whether, when it's covered, how much more of the water is gonna go to her property. I mean, I, I listened to all of them, and a lot of it might just stop right there, right after the deck. Because in my catch, I mean, somewhere in my flow, but I'm just, I mean, as much as I want to. Look at how concerned I am. But I I don't know if that's gonna be, if we could attribute. The new roof to a flow. Of anything else, I mean, I just wanna, I I I don't know, you know?
I I don't think any of us know.
Right, it's, water's been coming down this whole time.
Right, right.
Don't think an additional roof is gonna create, it's just it's additional issue, you know, through the cracks into the dirt underneath versus all the draining to.
Concent- concentrated, as Paul described. So I do want to address. From a variance standpoint, that. Because the homeowner has such a limited backyard due to the extreme front, that setback of the house from the street. They have no buildable area in the back, so. I don't have a problem at all with the variance request. For that matter, or for that reason. Um, from the roof, again, we're we're not putting more rain. Onto the property to drain, we're just potentially. Having a situation with the roof that it might be a little more concentrated, especially um. If it's adding to the existing. Flow of the pipe or the drainage pipe. Uh, so. You know, I don't know that, I don't know how we say, the whatever runoff from the roof has to be routed through a. Separate drains, drain pipe, I I don't know, can we?
I mean.
Specify that, is i- is it, but as you guys were discussing, is that even a material enough issue, which none of us can can assess?
Yeah, and and the variance here, right, is is the setback.
Right, right.
And it's, it's virtually the same footprint, I guess the, yeah, the fireplace would probably add another foot, I don't know what it'll be, you know, whatever. Might be, so that's the variance in front of us. Um, for us to try to. Decide, we're not hydrologists, right, for us to try to decide how much that's gonna impact that? You know, maybe the neighbors could talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, I think you're right, I mean, I would get right, I would probably suggest what the permits get together with the Masons, you know? Maybe we'll go friendly, um, I mean, I don't think there's any animosity, they just haven't met.
No, it sounds, I mean, since there's seven houses, all pumping water down there, they may have a, they may have a case, we don't know.
The garbage problem does bother me, but um, he said it's not, he he didn't do it, there's no way for us to know who did it, I mean, that's a different story.
It's or, who knows?
And and I. I, you know, staff has not outlined that the homeowner is adding a significant amount of new impermeable surface. Um, there there has not been a concern identified that the roof. Will lead to extensive. Additional. Drainage. So for the request that's in front of us, as you identified, it's just a setback, and beyond that.
It's not part of this very, I'd like to think that they could talk about it, cause you are. Currently, it's not part of the same flow, it's gonna goes down to the deck, so.
Let's ask.
Chairman, could you please speak into the microphone?
Yes, yeah, I'm usually I'm pretty loud, so sorry about that.
Let's ask the homeowners to work through that. As you, as you've suggested.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay.
In my paper. Okay, for Z B A twenty five dash oh seven. I move to approve the request for a variance from chapter twenty seven, section fifty eight to allow a porch to encroach into the rear setback with the following conditions. One, construction must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan. Prepared by Busby and Post Land Surveying Company dated February fifth, twenty twenty five, which is in appendix A. And two, if construction is not commenced within two years of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
I second.
First and a second for approval, all's in favor? Application passes. Last case of the evening. Is Z B A twenty five dash oh eight. Homeowners at twenty one ninety nine Brendan Drive, request a variance from chapter twenty seven, section fifty eight. To allow a home addition to encroach into the rear and side setback.
Good evening, board, um, so this request, as for twenty one ninety nine Brendan Drive. These are the existing conditions, on the left here, you can see an aerial image of the existing property, it is a corner lot, it's at the corner. Brendan Drive and Prestwood Court. And then the photos on the right are just illustrating uh, the backyard, you can see the top photo, that's an existing sunroom that they want to. Um, turn into um, a conditioned part of the house and bump out the walls slightly. And then the photo on the bottom is showing the area with the bedroom where they are also wanting to bump out a wall slightly as well. Um, this is the proposed project, um, on the left is the elevation. Um, on the right is the site plan. Um, the area under construction are the ones outlined in the dark solid black line, so it's just those. Um, two small areas on the back of the house. Um, and then the red is uh, highlighting the um, existing encroachment into the setback. You can see that the setback sort of cut off the back corners uh, of the house. Um. I've also included just an extra graphic, the house is sighted pretty uh, essentially catty corner uh, on the, on the lot. Um, with a diagonal orientation, um, which creates a really awkward. Triangular building area in the rear. Um, but I just created a graphic to show that this same footprint, this same configuration of the house. If it had a normal orientation, is able to fit within the buildable area, so they're not. Asking for more buildable area essentially, it's just that the way the buildable area is allocated is extremely. Um. You know, problematic for this project. Um. Uh, essentially the um, back uh, of the uh, sunroom that they're wanting to turn into. Um, a part of the house is twenty nine point five feet from the rear property line, and then um, the proposed um. Addition to the back bedroom uh, would be approximately uh, six point seven five feet from the side property line. So overall, um, because of the, you know, constraints by the placement and orientation of the house, um. You know, with these unique conditions, we do find that the strict application of the setbacks do prevent um, improvements to the rear yard. In in any way that ki- kind of makes sense, you know, due to that triangular buildable area. It's just not really workable, um, in order to accommodate, you know, a project like this, which is relatively minor. Um, definitely sort of an incremental change to an existing home and is also definitely in keeping with the, the character and scale of the neighborhood as well. Um, they're not adding any additional stories, it truly is just um, some. Horizontal, you know, bump outs of the walls, um. Both of which are are really only amounting to less than a hundred. Both of which are, are really only amounting to less than a hundred square feet of actual, um, additional encroachment. So overall, we are recommending approval, um, subject to the site plan essentially.
Thank you. Any questions? Would the applicant, uh, care to address the board? Please state your name and address, please.
Uh, I'm Chris Lee, um, twenty-one ninety-nine Brendan Drive, um. I'm the husband of the applicant, uh, I have a few more comments than the second applicant. Uh, so we bought our house in, uh, twenty twelve. So we've been residents here for thirteen years, uh, we've raised our family here, so we have an eight-year-old son, a two-year-old daughter. Um, we absolutely loved Don Woody, we've appreciated development since becoming incorporated in two thousand eight. Um, we're members of community, so, uh, we, both our children have gone to the J C C for daycare. My son is at Donovan Christian School, um, we're involved with sports, um, so he's Brook Run Park, it's a fantastic project, he's, uh, on the Rush. Uh, Academy Soccer Team there. Also members of Kings, Kingsley Pool, uh, and we go to the Kingsley, King, Kingswood Church, so, um. Uh, really enjoy it here, uh, it's a beautiful, beautiful space with, uh, wonderful trees, we love the proximity to the city. Um, spacious lots are wonderful. Um, so we really do have a, a desire to stay, we want this to be our forever home, um, but as you can tell, our, our, our family's growing, um, so all we're really trying to accomplish. Is a, a modernized, uh, bathroom, um, for us, uh, so bumping out that wall a little bit. And then secondly, just creating a space for the grandparents, so they, they all live out of town, so if they come and visit, um, they can stay in that conditioned room. That's currently, um, a sunroom, um, also a double purpose, um, being an office with the work from home environment. So, um, we think it's pretty minor, um, six hundred, six hundred square feet, I think is the addition, uh, but most of that, um. As Madeline's mentioned, is existing footprints, we're really, really adding a hundred square feet to, to the existing property. Uh, so relatively small, um, we actually engaged with a specialized architect, um, he's a professor over at Auburn, Auburn, um, he, uh. Uh, has a passion for mid-century modern homes, if you look to design, it's very much in characteristic of the home, uh, really excited about that. Um, and really, it, you know, from the front of the property, there's, there's no impact, uh, from the front edge, it, visually it won't change at all, so. Um, really minimal, uh, impact to the community, uh, we think it's gonna be a big upgrade, both our, um, neighbors are. Uh, very excited about the project, two of them are actually here, um, and there are side neighbors, um, that, uh, will have the, the larger enc- encroachment with. Um, unfortunately, you know, the house was built in nineteen seventy to the, to cab standards, uh. And so the existing home doesn't fit within the, you know, the setbacks, um, just sitting on the property as, as is, so we really can't, can't do anything, we're very constrained. But we're really excited about, uh, the project, um, improving the neighborhood and, and really living here forever, so, uh, we really appreciate, uh, approval of the variance.
Thank you. Anybody else wanna speak in favor, you don't have to, just, uh, that's part of the protocol. Uh, if not, then, uh, anybody here to speak in opposition? Didn't think so, uh, any questions for the applicant? Questions, guys? No questions? All right, then we'll close it for board comment, and I need a motion.
Uh, but, just to elaborate and justify very odd. Uh, very limited buildable space, the incremental changes are minimal, I, it's just they, the, the plan changes are minimal. And very little impact all in the backyard, um. So laying all that out.
No, I, I would agree, it's, it's, it's minimal, um, a hundred square feet is really nothing when you talk about additional, they're just popping those. I guess the wall out a little bit, and, uh, yeah, footprint's basically the same, I mean, it's just, it's pretty modest. Uh, at least exterior wise, for variance purposes, so I don't have a problem with it either.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and, and move to approve the request for a variance for, from chapter twenty-seven, section fifty-eight. To allow a home addition to encroach into the rear and side setback with the following conditions. One, construction must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by building, and. I guess that's the name of the com- then, the name of the company who submitted the site plan, um, building and. Uh, that is dated December eighteenth of twenty twenty, is that correct?
Yeah, so we, uh. Made these plans quite a long time ago, and then COVID hit, and, uh, got put on pause, so.
Okay.
So we're back on it.
Okay, thank you for, so to confirm, yes, the date of that submitted site plan is December eighteenth of twenty twenty. As in appendix A, uh, and two, if construction has not commenced within two years of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Second. First and a second on the floor for approval, all those in favor? Aye. Variance passes, congratulations. Any other business, folks? No public comment, because there's no cards for public comment, board comment. Okay, with that, we are adjourned, thank you.